I'd like to follow this meeting of the Raton City Commission for the work. The public can use that.
Sure. Mayor Sagata. Mayor Protim Schuster. Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Jacomo.
Couple of announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 9th, 6:00 PM here in Chambers. We also have a notice of a potential quorum of city commissioners, the Raton Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan, the MRA implementation. P3 Workshop will be August 1st, 2022, from 5:45 to 8:00 PM at the Raton Convention Center, 901 South Third Street. Public is also encouraged to attend to envision how the city-owned Coors Building could be redeveloped via public-private partnership to further revitalize downtown Raton. This time I will start with committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Hi, actually my boards and whatnot did not meet this month, so by month I had nothing to report.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Council Johnson Memorial Library Advisory Board Meeting with held on July 19, 2022, 5:00 PM. Library Director, Library Director, Library Board, Main Insight is noted for discussion how June 30th was the last day of the fiscal year 2122, library necessary expenditures for state debt in the 2018 full bond times. It's this school report for a month of May, donations collected were zero, fines collected were $2.46, puppies made were $355.12, mortgages received were $90. Story hours have been numbered 43, attended by 160 persons. Program salaries, land rent, and street obtained by 10 persons. This is a school report for June 2022, donations collected were zero, fines collected were $72.66, puppies made were $126.22, mortgages received were zero, story hours had been 12, attended by 100 persons, program salaries, program salaries 4, attended by 112 persons. Very good meeting in the afternoon public service, someone has called us from 5:00 PM, 2:00, 2:00, 2:22, 2:22, financial, financial statistics. This school information was presented to the board by RPS manager, Ruggins. Ruggins offered and has approved our board. Raton general manager did consider giving the report on any of the time which should all be themselves. It also reported that the Queen Tower demolition, which was, which has since been completed. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
Yeah, attended the Raton Water Board meeting on the 15th. Lake Maloya is currently 1.15 feet below spillway. Lake Maloya is dropping slightly, but it's still runoff into the lake. All three of the large water tanks that have been cleaned and are back in service. They're looking at sealing of the spillway in Maloya for this fall. The Cimarron project has started. There was a computer failure at the wastewater plant that was repaired, and MSHA reported nationwide deaths in trenches up from last year. You know, where people get killed working in the trench. The Raton Financial Advisory Committee met on Monday, the 25th. We approved the financial report to be presented to the commission tonight. That's all I have.
Alrighty, thank you. Mayor Protim.
I have been out of town and unavailable for meetings since July 19th, although I can report in, we will be talking about later that from July 20th, the lodgers tax advisory board did meet, and they have the regulations for us.
Alrighty, okay, thank you. For myself, on July 18th, New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Executive Board met to discuss possible litigation, we met in closed session to discuss those items. And coming up this Saturday, the New Mexico Municipal Resolutions Committee will be meeting in Albuquerque, which I will be chairing. And I believe Commissioner Chatterley said she will be attending as well. That is all I have. Item six, items from citizens present, anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will move to item 7A, deliberate an act on approval of July 12th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Should have had a chance to go over them, they were in the packet.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, public hearing, infrastructure capital improvement plan, ICIP fiscal year 2024 through 2028. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, as we've discussed at previous meetings, we are in the process of gathering public input for the ICIP for 2023 through 2027. Mr. Berry has been gathering information from department heads and other city departments as far as what their priorities would be for the upcoming ICIP. We have a request from RPS regarding their photovoltaic solar, that they'd like to request addition to the ICIP for some additional funding for that project. And in that, Mayor, we're hoping to still get public comment, the ICIP very important document, folks could attend tonight, as we are having a public hearing, but in the absence of that, they're welcome to email or contact City Hall to express what they think our priorities should be as well.
Alrighty. Any questions or comments for Mr. Phillips?
No. And these are anticipation, Mr. Mayor, that we will have this at the first meeting in August for final approval to be submitted.
Okay. Are these also posted on the website, Jason, is it, or not?
I believe the current ICIP is on the website, correct, isn't it?
Um, actually, I don't believe it is. I could put it on there today.
Well, might just so somebody can take a look and might have some comments. Alrighty, any other comments or questions? Since the public hearing, we will take any comments. Seeing none, we will move on. Item C, deliberate an act on event forum for homecoming parade, September 23rd, 2022. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, in what is sure to signal the end of summer, we have our first post-school event. This is a request from Raton Public Schools High School Student Senate for the annual homecoming parade. It is on First Street as we've typically done. It looks like the date on that is going to be September 23rd at 1:00 PM, and all relevant department heads have reviewed the event forum and signed off for street closure, so we would therefore recommend approval of this event to the commission.
And just so you know, I did speak with Anderson Weiss today, and he had contacted Tanya in order to get us the insurance. I was supposed to receive the email, and I haven't, but I'm expecting it, so the insurance will be intact as well.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the event forum for homecoming parade, September 23rd, 2022, pending the insurance.
Motion and a second.
I'll second.
To approve the homecoming, thank you. Homecoming parade event pending the insurance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on lodgers tax advisory board recommendations. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, the lodgers tax advisory board met July 20th. They have the following recommendation, they are recommending $490 be awarded to the Center for Community Innovation to pay for printing costs, shipping, driving, and administrative training for explore Raton's hospitality training map to train local businesses on what activities and sites visitors can visit in and around Raton. And you've got a little bit of documentation in the packet on the breakdown of those expenditures.
And I guess this is kind of what the map's going to look like?
I'm assuming that is a draft version of the maps of sites to be seen in.
Cool. Pretty good.
I'll make a motion to approve the lodgers tax advisory board recommendations.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the lodgers tax advisory board recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, deliberate an act on award of demolition contract for house located at 568 North First Street. Mr. Phillips.
So Mayor and Commissioner, if you are traveling north on North First Street, just past the old plaza and the bridge on the left-hand side, most of you recall, we had a structure that the front face had fallen off of. We had deemed it a dangerous structure. The structure changed hands multiple times from the time that we deemed it dangerous until today. We have completed a title search of the property that, and received a number of warrant, or title auctions that have transferred title to the city, and therefore Mr. Berry satisfied that we are indeed the owners of 568 North First. We have commissioned an environmental review that did not find abatable levels of letter asbestos, so the building is cleared for demolition as regular debris. We solicited written quotes, received three. The lowest quote was from Mozark LLC for $28,900 excluding GRT. They range from $28,900 to $68,900, and at this time, we are recommending award of a contract to demolish this structure to Mozark LLC, and Mr. Berry wanted me to note that this would be paid out of general fund.
Alright, any comments, questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the award of demolition of the house on North First Street to Mozark LLC. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate an act on MOU between the City of Raton and the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board as required by J-JAC agreement number 21-690-3200-20841-4. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, normally I would defer to Ms. Antinuti on this, but with the power outage this afternoon, we had a little trouble getting our servers reset, and our budget items that are more pressing at the bottom of this page are being finished up as we speak. This is our standard MOU for the J-JAC continuum. You've got a copy of the agreement in its entirety there, and no doubt it would not be on the agenda if she was not recommending approval of this MOU.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton Continuum Advisory Board under the date of agreement.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt the MOU between the City of Raton and the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on resolution 2022-36, requesting NMDOT to prioritize I-27 development. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, you should have in your packet late arriving the 2022-36 resolution crafted by Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry attended the New Mexico Transportation Committee meeting last Thursday to express in person the City of Raton's desire to see New Mexico wholeheartedly support the federal designation of Interstate 27. It's been noted that Texas, once the designation was made, has already began preparations and earnest to fund and build their section, and that we are going to have to lobby for the State of New Mexico Department of Transportation to prioritize this for us. I think it's an effort that we would combine with Union County, Clayton, Colfax County as it impacts all of us, but it's important not just to let the designation take place, but for the mechanisms at DOT to happen, for it to be funded, placed on the step. Our preference is that a high priority be placed on it and construction begin as soon as possible on a project like this. Obviously, we're competing with other communities for interstate dollars that are already well-established, such as I-10 and I-25, so we're going to have to really beat the brakes in an attempt to get this taken seriously and funded, and this is Mr. Berry's first step on what will be a long journey towards the development of Interstate 27.
Alrighty. Any comments or questions? Jason, do you know what the kind of the feeling was in the meeting?
I think it was well-accepted. I'm not sure that statewide, everybody truly understands the designation. Some folks that we talked to, it's the first that they've heard of it. I'm sure, you know, in every room, everybody's lobbying for the interstate in their community, so if you're Vegas, you're looking for your I-25 off-ramps to be redone, so we'll have our work cut out for us, but I think everybody sees the benefit of what having two interstates intersecting in your neck of the woods would be, and Clayton has been wholeheartedly on board with this from day one. So I think that we'll get the support, it's just going to take a little political capital to get there.
Cool. Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 20-23-36, requesting NMDOT to prioritize I-27 development.
Second. A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-36. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on an agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County for vector control services. Mr. Phillips. Almost got you.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an annual agreement that we execute between the City of Raton and Colfax County for vector control services, which is a fancy way of saying that we're going to spray for mosquitoes, something that wasn't a high priority earlier in the season as we were in drought, but it has rapidly became a little more urgent to us at this point. Mr. Berry would have liked me to point out that we like to let the public know that if they'd like to contact us as soon as possible, if they want to opt out, if they have some reaction to the pesticide, or if there be keepers and such, we do keep kind of a list and a map that we let our vendor know of areas that are not wanting to be sprayed, and also to point along that the best way to control mosquitoes is to keep your lawns cut shorter, as you'll have less mosquitoes by doing so. With that, we would recommend approval of this agreement for vector control services.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the vector control sector.
A motion and a second to accept the agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County for vector control services. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on resolution 22, 2022-37, disposal of surplus vehicles. Jason?
Mayor and Commissioner, the vehicles in question here that are subject to this resolution are owned by Raton Public Service Company. They have passed resolution 2022-7 where they declared the following vehicles a surplus, a 1992 Chevrolet pickup truck, a 2000 Chevy A-8500 double bucket truck, and a 1998 Chevy Altec Digger unit. You see the relative values, the pickup truck valued at 1,000, the bucket truck at 7,500, and the Digger unit at 2,500. We will have a parallel resolution, ours being numbered 2022-37, proceeding to dispose of these RPS vehicles that are in the door.
Alrighty. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-37, disposal of surplus vehicles.
Second. A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-37, disposal of surplus vehicles. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate an act on resolution 2022-38, fiscal year 22, end-of-year budget adjustments. Jason, I guess you're it.
Mr. Mayor, it might be worth taking a quick pause to see if Ms. Antinuti is available. I mean, I, we have them in here, but I'm sure we have gone through this agenda way faster than she would anticipate if you would grant me.
Could we have the motion take a five-minute recess?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor for a five-minute recess?
Okay.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We're in recess. Hurry. Sorry, Marty.
I'm going to keep going.
Okay.
I'm sure she thought I was longer-winded than that.
We'll give her time to catch her breath.
Can I have a walk, please?
Since I have to steal your highlighter, I guess I'll... We're starting with item J.
Starting with item J. We have a motion to come out of recess.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are back, we are back in session. Item J, deliberate an act on the resolution 2022-38, fiscal year 22, end-of-year budget adjustments. Michael Ann.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we have our end-of-year budget We do quite a few adjustments throughout the year, so the end of the year isn't too lengthy, but it really just consists of moving monies around to ensure, once I've reconciled the financial reports, that we don't have any line items in the negative. And then also, you'll see there's various transfers, and that's a result of projects that have either finished at the end of the year or didn't finish, and we're having to do temporary transfers. If it's a temporary transfer at the end of the fiscal year pending various grant reimbursements, then I rebudget that figure in the new budget year to refund either the general fund or whatever fund basically lent those monies pending the grant reimbursements. So we had several of those this year. Other than that, I, I think that, you know, the juvenile justice is one every year that we have our final grant reimbursement pending at the end of the year. This year, we did have several other projects, including the CDBG, the greenhouse project, and a couple of projects at the airport, including some CARES Act money that we get for utility payments. So I would stand for any questions. If not, I would recommend approval of a final budget adjustment, 2022-38.
Just a clarification. So are we also approving the water board budget adjustment?
We actually just put that in there for you.
Information.
Information only. So the Water Works has already submitted their budget to their financial analyst, and he's acknowledged receipt of those budget adjustments as well. So that's more just for your information.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-38, pending the end-of-year budget adjustment.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-38. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate an act on resolution 2022-39, approval of the fiscal year 22, end-of-year financial reports for City of Raton, Raton Water Works, Raton Public Service. We have Michael Ann here, along with General Manager for Water Works, Terry Sykes, and General Manager for RPS, Dave Fencino. So, Michael Ann, you want to start us off?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioner, I have given you in your packets the final end-of-year reconciled report as of June 30th. You will see that our ending cash balance in the general fund is $3,645,265.31. We ended the year quite well. A lot of that was because we exceeded our budget projections for grocery receipts, which you'll recall throughout our discussions during the year was related to construction, and then also the new online sales tax. Also, Raton Public Service had started distributing the loan payments back to the city for the temporary loan that we had given them to buy out the power sales agreement, and they actually, instead of two payments this year, they were able to make four, so they've accelerated their repayment of that loan, and so those funds do go back into the general fund as well. Also, I've included with the report the lodgers tax comparison spreadsheet. We did end the year with revenues of $540,279. That is an all-time high for lodgers tax, but as we've discussed, I think it has more to do with an increase in the rates at our local hotels and motels. However, I do think that there's been an increase in travel as well. And then the gas tax comparison, we did have a pretty good year with gas tax, but looking at the first distribution on the chart for the month of July, it's already kind of showing a little bit lower than last year's July, which I think could mean a little bit less travel, maybe due to fuel prices. But this excise tax, it's a tax based on the number of gallons sold, the price isn't a factor in the tax that we collect. And even though we're talking about end of fiscal year, which is June 30, our grocery receipts tax report that's in your packet is for the first month of the new fiscal year, for July. We have budgeted an increase this year in the grocery receipts, just based on the data and the trend that we saw this past fiscal year, so we probably won't see that we're, you know, 10%, 15% above budget projection, but we want to be right on track, and so for July, we're 1.76% above our budget projections, starting out the new fiscal year. Is there any questions regarding our June financial report?
Terry, Dave, anything to say about your report?
I have nothing to add, just a few questions.
I'm going to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2022-39, approval of that July 20th end-of-year settlement. approval of that '22 end-of-year financial report for figuring that point. I can model it with the 2022-39.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-39. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item L, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-40, approval of final fiscal year 2023 budgets for City of Raton, Raton Water Works, Raton Public Service. Again, the same criminals are in the room, so. See what we got.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do present to you this evening our final budget. The interim budget was previously approved prior to July 1st, so that's the budget that we're operating from currently. I had intended to have your budget binders and everything ready for you this evening until the power went out, and we lost a couple hours today. But we were also right in the middle of payroll, so we had some kind of important things going right when the power outage hit. So anyway, I will get your budget binders together for you, but I have provided you the recap of the budget. Our budget is quite extensive, and this is the document, so it's close to 200 pages. But if we take a look at the recap, and then I've also provided you the charts that kinda summarize the revenues and the expense. For the general fund, we are gonna have a final budget of $5,804,435. When I give you your budget, I had hoped to have kind of the comparison to show the change from the interim to the final, but I didn't quite get that done. So I will include that in your budget binders so that you know exactly every single change that I had made to the document. Also, the total budget for all city funds, we do have quite a few large projects budgeted this year, would be $24,074,729. So that's probably close to double what we've had in years past, but that's mainly due to the various construction projects that we have going on. So if we look at the chart, one of the largest increases we had on the revenue side was we did get a residual payment from Raton Water Works, and it was just a little over $188,000. So that's kind of additional revenue that we didn't have in the interim budget that is now included in this final budget. So some of those funds will kinda offset some of those capital expenditures that we were looking to dip into reserves to fund that we discussed during the interim budget process. So you'll see on the chart below our revenues and expense and the net transfers, that actually our revenue is $320,554 over our expense. It's mainly because of the water transfer, but then it's also, we had several large projects such as the CDBG. You'll recall, we had transferred large sums of money to cover those projects until they were complete, and we can close them out. So hopefully, in the next couple months, we'll close those grants out, and then we can transfer all of those funds back into the general fund. So I've included all of those transfers in this final budget. So we would be looking, we're projecting an ending cash balance in the general fund closer to $4 million. It's $3,965,819 if we realize all of the revenues and, of course, we were to spend what we've budgeted.
Any questions? Any question? Any questions for Terry or Dave? They're wrapped up in this one here. You guys got off easy, man.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-40, approval of the final fiscal year 2023 budgets for the City of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
A motion, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-40, municipal budgets. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item M, city manager report. Mr. Phillips, I'd just state for the crowd that Mr. Phillips is admirably filled in for Mr. Berry, who has got the COVID bug, and we wish Mr. Berry speedy recovery. So, Jase?
Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to sit in. I did manage to keep the report to one page. It reads somewhat like an Oscar speech, but I will try to keep it brief. First off, I'd like to thank the organizers and attendees of the Run to Raton, which took place this last weekend. It looked to be a well-attended event and another successful year. I was on call for the weekend and didn't receive any phone calls, so I think it's safe to assume that everything was pretty uneventful on the front there. On the construction side of things, crews are in town today, ironically right before the rainstorm, working on the pavement markings for the Raton Depot and our CDBG project. These are the last steps in completing construction on these two projects. CDBG began in earnest almost five years ago with the grant application process beginning. The depot grants date back to around 1998, so needless to say, we are very excited to be completing these two projects. Work on Byron and Whittier is progressing nicely despite the rain. The asphalt and concrete work on Byron is complete, and Whittier is nearly half-done. And I think we can look forward to completion of these two sections of road within the next two weeks or so. Those projects total in aggregate somewhere around the neighborhood of $1.6 million, so wrapping up one of the busier construction seasons that we've had in recent memory. While I have the floor, I'd like to give a pat on the back to some of the men who work in my department. Dave Gallegos and his crew at the new transfer station have done a great job as we work out some of the kegs in opening the new facility. I'm proud of their efforts to get things off to a great start as we return recycling and begin modernizing our solid waste facilities. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work put in by our parts and building departments. The rain presents several challenges in keeping these facilities open and accessible to the public. And despite the small number of folks that we have in our parts and buildings department, we're in great shape for this time of year. Little rain helps parts look better, so we'll take that. Shout-out to our mechanic, Kevin Garcia. I consider myself lucky to have a mechanic with his skillset to take care of the Mad Max assortment of variously aged equipment that my department possesses. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Larry Marcus and our street department crew for literally swimming against the current in our efforts to minimize flooding and drainage issues throughout town. It takes a tremendous amount of drainage, of effort to keep our aging storm system functioning during monsoon season and to deal with the large aftermath of potholes that result from the much-needed rain. And I'd just like to thank those crews for the extra hours they put in cleaning up the underpass and the messes that we've had throughout town. And also thank police, fire, and the water department for their assistance with those projects. Without the water department's factor rig, we would have a difficult time keeping storm rain. And it's a vital piece of equipment that it takes two of their guys to help us do storm rain, work with it, but it's instrumental for that. And when it doesn't go well, we need police and fire to block the road while we work around it. And, Mr. Mayor, that is all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Since we've got him here, one quick question. Dave, what was the power thing today? What was the issue?
The tri, the substation, Borough Canyon Substation, took a shot. I'm guessing of lightning, I haven't heard officially. And it knocked the whole sub out.
Wow.
And so the time to try to get tri-state personnel from Walsenburg to the site to put eyes on, that was the long delay.
Okay, appreciate it. We're up and going now.
Up and going now.
All right, thank you. Any comments, more comments? Commissioner Chattery? Commissioner Jacomo? Commissioner Chavez? Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and I have none myself. We are adjourned, thank you. Good job, Jase.